November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, Massachia Planning Commission. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Muskie? And I believe Mr. Cox is staying until we, yeah. Find his replacement.
All right. First item is approval, the October twentieth, public hearing meeting minutes. Any comments on those? Pretty extensive. Anyone want to make a motion?
Well, I'll move that we approve them as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Epstein.
Oh, that's, that's right. All right, then the minutes for the regular October twentieth meeting. Any comments?
I'll also move the thing approved also as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
First agenda item. Sign above proposing signage for five seventy-six East Highland Road. Is that you?
Yes.
Come on up, come on up.
All right. How are you guys today?
How are you?
How are you? Monday? Okay. It's the Highland Autobody. All right. So we've got your sign and picture of it with some dimension stuff. We've got comments from the city planner. Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your comments?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report dated November eighth. The applicant is proposing to erect a single four-by-eight, thirty-two square foot ground sign at five seventy-six East Highland. Property zone limited industrial. So the code under eleven seventy-nine oh seven P does allow forty square foot signs. So from an area perspective, it's fine. There are some existing signs there. There's two ground signs. Actually, when this came up for Highland Autobodies, some, some number of years ago, the same issue was brought up that there were too many ground signs. So it's good to see that they're shrinking it down and going to one ground sign. I did note in my report, there are some other temporary signs and things that just felt that worth calling out, that those should be reviewed to ensure that they have proper permits in place. But as it relates to the sign itself, area is fine. But I do note that the architecture of the sign is something I think that the planning commission will want to talk about. Over the last, I'd say, five, ten-plus years, the commission has been focused on, amongst other things, looking at the architecture of signs. You may remember, Red Cross the Street, we did a, we worked on a sign recently. I gave you some addresses, eight fifty East Highland, five eighty-five East Highland, six thirty-five East Highland. In those cases, we tried to reflect a, a sign with a surround that incorporates some of the materials from the building, so brick or stone or block. In this instance, none of those materials were represented. So I thought that was something the commission should work with the applicant on. And additionally, there's no landscaping proposed. That is a requirement to have the, the sign in kind of landscape setting. Some sort of year-round landscaping, whether it's low-line shrubs, boxwoods, or others. And then when, during the warmer months, some sort of color added to the signage, flowers or otherwise. And then the only thing I wasn't sure about, the, in the application states, top of sign will be nine and a half feet tall. Of course, the code limits it to eight feet. It looks like the, the sign, maybe the nine and a half is a foot and a half going underground. And the sign is actually only eight feet from the ground elevation, but we want to get confirmation on that because the max is eight feet tall for a ground sign. With that said, those are some of the issues I think the commission should, should work through. Again, the area is acceptable, but feel we should talk about the architecture as well as the landscaping and confirmation of the overall height.
All right. We can do that. Nea, do you have any?
No.
Okay. So Commissioner, I guess, you have any questions or comments or anything off of what Mr. Francis had to say?
Did, did you read their comments before you came here?
I did, yes.
Conform to some of them?
Yeah, so as far as the landscaping goes, a sign above doesn't do landscaping. So I will communicate with the customer, say, hey, I need your landscape plan to talk to me and get me that. Which I can do. There's no problem, I'm sure we can get that. But what I'm saying is like, we don't make the landscaping plans. And then as far as the height goes, um, yeah, I just, honestly, I just copy and paste it from the artwork because I did the sign over five eighty-five. So we matched the height. Now, this one is, it's sixty by, sixty by ninety-six. So on the artwork, when you, when you say forty-eight, forty-eight is the width of like the, the tenant signs that are on here. But the actual whole sign itself is sixty, so it makes that forty square feet. But yes, it was nine and a half feet if you include inch and a half from ground to bottom of sign, and then the eight feet of the sign, which would make it nine and a half feet.
So it is nine and a half feet from grade, above grade?
Yes.
So the code limits it to eight feet?
Okay.
So it'll have to be reduced in height, or you could try to get a variance from the board of zone appeals. But the, the commission can't change that. That's, the code is eight feet max for, for height.
Okay. If I do that, I'll just have to go and talk to the customer, hey, you want me to shrink this sign, or do you want me to apply for a variance? I, I don't know if they would want it.
Can they vary part of it? That was the suggestion, that maybe part of it's underground to make it eight feet rather than, that'd be a foot and a half underground. I think that's what, he, he thought maybe that was your thinking.
I think it's still enough to shrink the sign though, because it would put this, it would put that basically on the ground to make it comply.
Yeah, and if there, if the tenant takes that bottom spot, you're not going to see that there's any sort of snow.
That or the address.
I was looking at the, the one for five eighty-five, it's, according to the documents from here, it's seven point nine-two feet, whatever that, so it's just under eight feet.
From, from ground to top of sign?
That's how.
For the height of the sign?
Yeah. It would be from ground to top of sign, I assume that's how we approved it.
What month was that?
It was May of this year. Mr. Francis' comments were dated May thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. I'm trying to see if there's another document in here that I might have.
So it would have been for the June meeting?
Yeah, June meeting.
Yeah, that one, so our company made it, installed the sign, we did not acquire it.
Okay.
What about distance from the road? Right now, I have that at seventeen feet when it occurred.
I was actually going to ask that question because that seems like with that sign being, even if it's eight foot tall, seventeen feet back, is that going to impede upon somebody pulling out and losing visibility? And I guess probably not, but it's something we should probably discuss or think about.
I think we don't, don't want to get too close because, well, it's, it's a distance back from the right-of-way line that they usually.
It's five feet.
Okay, okay.
It's five feet from the right-of-way. I don't know where the right-of-way sits.
It's thirty-five feet from the center line of the street towards your property. Thirty, either thirty, thirty-five, I'm not sure. I think it's thirty-five there.
Do you know where this is at, in relationship to the existing sign?
Yes. So the existing sign is right here in my picture. This would be like just a bit closer to the existing sign. So I have my, my outward post basically right next to the inward post.
Okay, and it's, and it's out by where the Regency One currently is, where you wanted to actually put it. So we're not even close to the driveway. It's not by the old Highland Autobody sign. It's closer to the driveway. Okay, we're pretty, as long as, I guess, it's at least five feet back of the, the right-of-way line, I don't think there's going to be any visibility issues. It's like middle of the building.
Okay.
Is where these proposals.
I hope so then. They should update the site plans, you know, sort of rudimentary, should update the site plan just to reflect the right-of-way and location of the sign. It has to at least be five feet back from the right-of-way.
What is considered the right-of-way?
I think what Mr. Monaco just said, he believes it's thirty or thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet from the center of the road in.
So publicly owned, is the right-of-way, it's like includes the roads and the utility poles and, so it looks like your front yard is, is that what you're asking, what is right-of-way?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I guess it's, yes, it's land that's not owned by the building owner, it's owned by the city, right?
Right, correct.
On island. Yeah, includes the road, utilities, all that kind of stuff, it's set up for that. Looks like front yard. Usually you can tell if there's a line of poles, which there are, usually that, that's close to where the right-of-way line is at on your side.
Okay.
So I think as long as you're, what's it?
I don't think you're anywhere near that, though.
No, I'm just saying that's where the right-of-way line, yeah, the right-of-way, it's, it's probably just behind these poles. You're a bit, bit back from that pole line.
Okay.
So it's probably okay. But yeah, the city actually owns some of that grass and the curb and everything.
So it appears to me that the two things, that would be needed to get this approved. One would be to change the height, you get this to a max of eight feet tall, and then you need a landscape plan?
Those are two of the three items in, in my report?
Yeah, the other, the other thing that we, or Mr. Francis is kind of leaning, alluding to is, is the materials. If you look at all the newer signs down through there, they're typically a brick or a brick look-alike, some kind of substantial, if you look at Sohars just up the road, or what else are the other ones in there?
Empire.
Empire just across the street, and that's a massive sign.
Yeah, I've seen that one.
That's a massive building. Your, your newer signs in that stretch, and they typically got a foundation, a, some kind of base, or at least columns out of, out of building, the same building material, or there's this big block because the building is, usually they're, they're, they're brick, TNT exterminations, relatively new, something like that. I guess to, to address the one that you're, you were, you're probably looking at, which is the one across the street at five eighty-five, and what's up there, which is a lot like yours, is there, are general feeling that that's not, that's not an approved sign? That's, like, you said you didn't pull any permit for?
I did not pull the permit for that.
I don't think Chris Kowalinski did either.
I don't know if we pulled, I don't know that if anybody did.
That might have just gone out.
Let me just find that one.
I know there was some discussion about that one because it had the brick monument on the corner, I think, when it initially came in front of us. The, in the proximity to that corner sign that sits there, to get on that side street right there. I know there were some discussions about that because it was going to be conflicting with that in terms of height and such, but I don't remember, I don't remember this ever coming back.
Yeah. Yeah, there's still, there's still a little bit of unsure of what necessarily is going on with that, but that's not necessarily the prime example of what we're, what we're looking for down here. And whether that's actually approved, I think we got to do a little more digging. I don't know that it was or permitted to be put up like that. Anything that you see that's still, you know, two posts and a sign between it is probably pretty dated, you know, older than ten, fifteen years probably, that's down through there. For any other ones? This is something, I think it's a little bit newer, you know, something like that, which is in the vicinity of where you guys are, are at. I think that's, the, something to that effect, doesn't have to be extremely extensive, but something with the, the building materials, some other locations have used a base that's maybe a foot or two tall, they've used brick or some kind of faux brick. We're not crazy about it, but we've approved some of the faux brick around the base, and then put the sign going up above it. Something like that, I think, is what the city's, you know, current, current desires are for the signs that are going in town there. So that, the height, and.
And landscaping.
And landscaping is, is what we'd be, we'd like to see for the other, for the next to middle.
There's actually nothing even on the webpage for June, from a planning commission standpoint, from all of our snows, because I was trying to pull up to see if that was there, but I'm not finding it.
Okay, so I have to ask the obvious because I know these people are going to ask me.
Yeah.
So you're saying two post signs will get rejected?
Yeah, I think that, that's, yeah, the two, two, two posts like that is not what we're looking for. So I think that would, yeah, that's, I mean, I can't speak for everybody, but.
I agree.
Okay.
Probably screws up the area, just.
I'm not finding anything from June of this year when we had our.
Okay. I'll talk to the customer then and make whatever changes I need to make.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions or concerns? Maybe we'll just continue this to the, I'll make a motion to continue this to the next meeting to give the applicant a chance to address the three items that we discussed, the architecture, the landscaping, and the size.
I'll second.
Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have all of the memos, but there's no, what's that? I don't either, that's why I'm just looking at. We did, because.
Uh, sign around the Cleveland for hand and stone spot. Good, how are you? So, bring something else. Got various questions, but you probably don't know the sign person. I was curious if this was something that they had planned all along. Do you remember, like another tenant being kind of in there, or is that?
Yeah, I think.
Kind of always in there, planned?
Yeah, I think this was the real, the last kind of small space that they were trying to lease out.
All right, well, we've got your stuff. Mr. Francis has some comments, if you can, if you can go over those.
Sure. My report dated November eighth, so this is signage for the hand and stone business that's going to be located in the Cipriani Retail Plaza. Obviously, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about this plaza, from the transformation of the architecture of the buildings to the tenants that would be going in there, and then ultimately the signage. This being the last one. The tenant signage for this is just slightly over twenty-three feet, so they'll have just about forty-seven square feet. The proposal is just about forty-seven square feet. So they're right there as, as far as area goes. The sign itself's individual blue, white, acrylic internally illuminated LED channel letters. Some of the sign faces in there are facelit, some are the LED channel. I, they, six-one dozen half in the other, it's, they all look, I think, relatively the same. There is no need for a color approval. This plaza, to my knowledge, doesn't have particular colors that it has to maintain. And then, so all of that, I think, is just fine. Then there's some window signage. There's signage on the entrance door that's shown with the hours of operation and the phone number. That signage is fine. It's just when you look at the graphic on the main wall sign, you'll note on the, each of the individual windows panels, and this is not noted in the application with the, with the door sign, but you can see that there's five different signs, restore, relax, refresh, facials, and massage. And it appears that's like a gray frosted signage for each one of those panels. The code under eleven seventy-nine oh seven F four A limits window signage to one sign based on the twenty-five percent standard. The door itself, that's fine, as I had stated. But each of those on the windows, I don't believe, is permissible, particularly being frosted. This site is located in the town, town center district and adjacent to other tenant spaces that don't have those frosted windows. I think, I believe the intent of the town center district is to have full clear vision glass and not that frosty. So I think everything, as far as the area and such, and the color of the individual letters is fine. Then we need to have discussion about the, the signs on each of those panels being, and then being frosted as well.
I actually emailed you right after that. They actually removed that whole thing from the package.
Oh, I don't recall getting an email from you.
Was it you?
Yeah, I said bring it to the meeting.
Yep, and I got it. Yep, so they just removed everything. They had decided a long time ago to not do it, and they just forgot to remove it from their sign package. So they're not even doing that. They're just doing.
She sent it right after I sent the memos out. So the memos were already out when she told, well, I didn't because I told her to.
Oh, 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 okay.
Yeah, I did. They're just keeping the hours on the door, and that's it. They're not doing anything on the outside of the windows. There's some windows on the inside that go into like their office space. They're putting stuff on those windows, but I didn't think that that needed to come for, into the board at all.
Those are back, like, in the back?
Kind of, yeah, like you can see them through the windows, but it's not on the outside windows. There's some on their inside windows that go into like their office space, I guess.
I mean, it's not on the windows.
Yeah, so how you define, how you define a sign which, you know, is probably just fine. Typically, so a sign can be on the inside of a tenant's space as well, because what will happen, not saying they're doing that here.
Sure.
It's probably just fine. It's far enough back, but what happens is, you'll often see, people will say, well, I can't have it on the windows? No problem. And they put it on inside and hang it from the.
Oh, no. They're literally having it on one of their windows inside the.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nea, do you have any?
No, I, you know, we will look at all those things before we issue an occupancy permit anyway, so if they were in violation like that, they would not get the occupancy permit, so.
Any questions from the commission? Seems like pretty easy one.
Yeah, looks real nice.
I'll make a motion to approve noting that the applicant is removing the frosted signs on the front windows from the application.
I'll second.
More discussion?
You want to make it subject to administrative approval?
Yeah, I could do that, subject to administrative approval. Just to confirm that.
Check it out.
Do you have, Susan, do you have copies?
No, I need it.
And, Mr. Chairman, just for my own ears.
Yes.
I believe what I heard you in the motion and second is that the frosting on all the panels is being removed as well as the signage, two separate things.
Okay. Susan, did you hear me say that?
Yes, I did.
All right, good. All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right.
Thank you very much. Have a good one.
All right, we've got a couple of ordinance things that we've been talking about. Fifty-one twenty-twenty-five, fifty-five twenty-twenty-five. I think fifty-five twenty-twenty-five, that was the, the RV issue, I think if I got it right. And I think that one, we did come to our, our conclusion at our last meeting, so I didn't think we were going to go through, and I've heard that council has not approved that anyway, but that's neither here nor here nor there. But I guess the other one, fifty-one twenty-twenty-five, that's the driveway one we've talked about.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things on that that, that need to be followed up with, I think, before we get too far into talking, again, that I've, I've let go a couple of times, is I need to reach out to Mr. Francis to help me actually send a formal notification to council that we're kind of taking that on, so I, I still need to do that. I think the other thing, looking back at the last meeting, is I think we're going to see if the administration could, could pull some sample, other communities if they've done anything similar, I think is, was what we talked about. And I'm guessing with as busy as they've been and everything with being down staffed, it probably hasn't happened. So I was thinking about maybe, at this point, maybe continuing this one till I can get follow-up finally with Mr. Francis.
If we, if we determined if, because I, I think the message was, and you were going to do it in writing, but.
Yeah.
Was that the planning commission wanted to take this on? Because we had missed the timetables and all that going on. And it's still in ordinance format, so is this at the council level? Is it, is it dead? Or is it just sitting on?
Which one? Well, the, the, the one regarding the recreation vehicles, there was kind of withdrawn, so that's a dead on. This, this one here, the garage, is the one that, you know, we still have to discuss. And I guess the main issues here are, one is what are we going to do with the driveways? They are going to an existing garage. And what are we going to do if a new driveway goes, I mean, if a new garage goes in backyard and, and there's a driver extended to that? So that was the question. I think everybody's pretty much in agreement that, you know, if you have a driveway now and it's gravel and you're going to replace or maybe appoint a civil inspection, you would have to, you know, comply and make it hard surface. The, the question, what everybody's kind of stumbling on is if you have a structure, whether it's large garage or a barn in a backyard, and you need to get to it, the question becomes, are we still allowing gravel? And if we allow gravel, gravel, are we going to kind of, you know, put the gravel between maybe some railroad ties or some, something that would contain the gravel from spreading everywhere? Because this is the problem now. I mean, we, all the, the driveways that we have now are gravel. They're getting wider and wider and wider, and, and we, we don't know what was up there. This is really, I mean, if you install a gravel driveway in Massachia, we can't stop you because we don't even have an ordinance that addresses that. So, you know, we should at least have, you know, some kind of ordinance that addresses that. And, and I mean, whatever, you know, you guys choose, that's what we'll enforce, but I'd like to at least see, you know, the driveway is going to the garage eventually be all hard surface, because, I mean, those things are, are tracking mud on the street when snowplow goes, they, they put the gravel in. We have a situation now at the end of Isabel, there were, you know, there's some driveways there and, and the snowplow has pushed all the gravel into a retention, you know, pond back there. So it's causing some issues, but again, it's up to you and council to decide what you go, where you guys want us to enforce.
Could I weigh in a little bit?
Go ahead.
I've studied this. I found it interesting, fascinating, because of the state law, which Brian's familiar with, it, it's conformed to, uh, it, they have non-conforming, uh, non-conforming use which are adopted from the state law. The state law creates this board, by the way, and the state law says, if you have one of these gravel driveways or any driveway or any surface, you can keep it forever unless you abandon it. And the one thing that bothered me about this ordinance is the word repairs. My last house for twenty years, we have a, a driveway over a hundred, a hundred yards long, actually, between two roads, and every three years, you repair it. A gravel driveway, it just wears out if people use it. So it's repaired. And the problem's going to be for our zoning board, under eleven seventy-three, seventy-three point oh-two, you have to have a certificate of non-conforming use. If somebody had. You have to have a certificate of non-conforming use if somebody has one of these driveways and you change the law. But you changed the law now. And so the zoning inspector is going to have to trot out there with a little certificate. Uh, each time the guy repairs his driveway and says, well, you're non, you're non-conforming. I, I think he'd have to do that. Maybe he wouldn't, maybe he'd do it once. Uh, but I, I think that's right. As, as long as you keep the driveway, you're going to keep those driveways forever if they want to keep the driveway.
This is not going to affect any existing driveways. This would only, you know, affect any new drives. We had a house on Valley View. That would be the last house going towards Hudson there on the left-hand side. There was a brand new house.
Near Highland, right? I think I saw it.
There's a brand new house that has a gravel driveway.
Right.
So this is what we're trying to prevent. I mean, by no means we're going to tell residents, you have to change it, you know, you have to change your driveway from, no, uh, if it's existing, it's fine. Now, if you were to maybe sell the house, and, and again, it's up to you guys when, when you want us to enforce it.
It doesn't say that if you sell the house. That'd be, that'd be an interesting question.
Right.
But you say, uh, it won't affect existing driveways. The word repair, put in there, put in your ordinance. If you put repair in there and the guy repairs it, like I said, every three years you have to repair it. That's now becomes a non-conforming use and somebody has to trot out there with a little certificate saying, you know, you're non-conforming, so if you sell this place, uh, you're going to have to do it. But I don't know about a, a sale of the house. That's not included in, in any of these things. I'm not sure a sale would work that way. I know there's a, uh, a common pleas court case in Akron where some homeowner, uh, I don't know what city he took on, but he won. Of course, based on this, this law that you can't, uh, their grandfathered in, they don't like that word, I know. But that's what they are. They're grandfathered in and, uh, you, you can't do that. So I, I would take out, the word repair bothered me on the gravel driveways. Cause everybody has to repair them and the city wouldn't like them un-repaired, I don't think. Uh, so, uh, I, I, I didn't like, I didn't like to see that in that ordinance, the word repair in there. Abandon is, is the, the necessary focal point, I think, on, on these type of ordinances. Anyway, that's my little speech.
I feel like we got two things here. I think we're all mostly in agreement, if not unanimously, on the primary driveway should be paved. It's, I think where we start to diverge is, is then that secondary driveway to the outbuilding is what we've been discussing for a while. Is there a way to do this, at least get the, the primary driveway done and work out the other part? Cause it comes back to my limitation that I, I'm kind of having trouble sleeping on this is if they're two hundred feet from the road, does that become cost prohibitive when they sell the house or however this were for them to put in two hundred feet of concrete?
How are you going to make somebody do their primary driveway? There's three of them on Valley View near, near Highland. If you go up Valley View Road and then left, there's three gravel driveways. They're the primary, you can't make them turn them into concrete.
No, we can't, but let's say another house is built next to them, we could, if we pass.
A new house, you're right. There's a point there.
Am I, am I understanding correctly? Yeah. And then the only other thing I, I wouldn't be opposed to look at, that's why I thought we were going to get some guidance from, uh, um, the city's legal on, on some of the wording on this. But if it was two hundred or some large amount, can, would we be willing to agree to paving a certain portion at the first hundred feet or something like that? Cause then it could become, I would think, an unreasonable financial burden. That may not, that may not, maybe against the spirit of what you're talking about because you may claim that they can start pulling dirt and stuff and snow and all that stuff from the part that isn't paved up by the house and pull it to the street if that's really an issue.
I just want to point out that this was drafted by the law director. This is not something that I did. So they came from Mark Daddick.
Right, but I'm saying we've expressed, or at least some of us have expressed some concerns with this. And, uh, I guess we're thinking that we're going to get maybe some amended language from, from law or council or something.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think it's that the commission might have some amended language. And I believe the chairman, um, was, is going to pen that email or letter and then ask for it to start here versus at council.
Yeah.
So you can provide some of that proposed amended language. Cause as it stands right now, this ordinance is sitting at council, like on their active agenda. And we long missed the requirement in the code for providing a report and recommendation. So technically it's dead here.
Well, they gave, we, I asked the council meeting for them to give you additional time and they agreed. It's winter time. I don't think too many people are going to be doing concrete driveways pretty soon. So, you know, you have plenty of time to, you know, discuss and just come up with the right decision, whatever it may be.
But I would give us that. There's some emails or something.
I guess, I guess what we probably is everybody, and I admit, I'm probably the, the biggest offender of this of not spending enough time on this before the meeting. But I guess if, if, you know, if you, you know, you liked the part about having, having a paved driveway for the main, main garage, but the secondary one, if it's more than some distance, maybe come up with some ideas, jot that actually down. If you've got some ideas, if you've got some ideas, you know, we want to take out repair, you know.
Yeah, that's what I would like.
Put this all together, pass it to the, to, to Nino, ask him if he can get Mark to incorporate this into the language. Whatever, several things we kind of think.
Why should we send our notes to you?
No, I, I think you probably got to bring them. Cause I think we can't do all the, you have to bring it.
I'll write up a little something for me, my, my little thoughts.
Yeah, if you want to put your thoughts in, you know, we could, whatever ones we decide.
Like, right.
I, I'm kind of with you on the repair thing. So I think that, you know, and, and I'm not far from, from Jesus thought about the, you know, extensively long ones. Jesus had a, a roll kind of pattern.
Yeah, we'll try to limit it.
And that was one of the things that they were hoping someone on type this commission could pull some research of other communities and see if they kept that primary driveway.
Well, that's how you normally do ordinance.
Cause if they're, if they're all making them paved at two hundred fifty feet, that seems to be working, then go with it.
Hudson doesn't even have one, by the way, I looked at. For anything. I couldn't find, I, well, I, I didn't do the whole code. What little I looked at today, I couldn't even find that they, uh, they worried about concrete driveway. There's a ton of, of gravel driveways in Hudson. But they're bigger lots, just like you said, a lot of them are big lots.
So, you know, the, the road to the main house seems like there's general concurrence about that. So that, I mean, it sounds like it.
I agree.
The back of the house to the outbuilding, I will tell you that, um, to pick a number will likely be arbitrary.
Yeah.
And you need to, you know how all these ordinances work? You want to show that it advances some legitimate government interest. I don't know what government interest you'd be advancing by picking a number out of thin air to say, this section can be paved and this can be gravelled. Because at the end of the day, it's all in the backyard.
Right.
And that's not being dragged out of the road. It's the, it's the main garage to the road that's the, being dragging out gravel.
Yeah, but also what I like to say is that this does not apply to existing structures. So if somebody wants to put up a garage or if wants to put up a barn in the backyard, they have to come to the building environment and they have to come to the planning commission. So when they come to the planning commission, we will look at the driveway and at that time, you know, we can make a decision, okay, it's gravel, you know, but let's do this, let's contain the gravel. Let's kind of, you know, outline this with railroad ties or stones or whatever. So we have control over that.
Well, I think we could basically then put a width on it that, that if it's a gravel driveway, it can be no wider than X feet must be contained by railroad ties and maintained in a reasonably clean manner.
Exactly.
And, and the other thought I had too was, is, and this is where I get your point, it kind of becomes an arbitrary piece, but maybe the first X amount, like up to, and this is where, if the house is way far back, it's not going to really do any good. Or it's going to open another whole can of worms. But my thought was is if there's a structure, it has the, that paved driveway or whatever has to be taken to at least the back part of the existing house and from there back can be gravel. Flip side of that is, is if that house sits two hundred, three hundred feet off the road, they're putting two hundred, three feet of concrete. And after that, who knows how much is left to, to not have concrete. But just a thought, that way at least it can, it keeps, it keeps that gravel from getting all the way to the street. Hopefully by that point, it's at least gotten off of the tires and wherever else. And by the time it reaches the road itself, just a thought.
And that's why it'd be nice to see what other cities have or have not done and, and how's it work.
By the way, the, the, uh, you say it doesn't apply to existing structures. These ordinances do apply to existing structures. If you repair a driveway, that's an existing structure. And, and so, uh, these ordinances apply to existing structures and, and the new ones you don't have to worry about. But this, this applies mostly to existing.
Yeah, but we had a, a large discussion about what is repair? Uh, at what point, uh, it becomes kind of a new concrete, uh, or a new driveway, you know, instead of repairing it, is it thirty percent, forty percent, fifty percent? And what, what, what percentage of that? Normally, you know, they use like forty percent is still repaired. You go over forty percent, then, you know.
Well, what if someone has a grass driveway going back to their barn in the back, which I've seen. In other words, they have a regular driveway.
Yeah.
And then, uh, they, they went for their tractor into their barn way in the back, which are in farms. The grass.
Yeah.
Now, that's an existing structure. Now what are we going to do?
It's existing. I mean, not, we're not going to bother. It's, it's existing.
Well, no, but this code would apply to that. If, if, if you, if you abandoned it or, I, I don't know. The whole thing's kind of screwy, I think.
That would be, I mean, as, as long as they resurface the existing gravel one, they, they are permitted to keep it. This is again, mostly for new because like I said, we have nothing in our ordinance that addresses any gravel driveway whatsoever. Neither the width, nor the depth, nor, nor the, you know, the maintenance. I mean, there's, there's nothing.
Well, that's the way it should read then. And maybe that's.
New, new driveways only.
Maybe that's something we could suggest and have the law director modify it to say, okay, our intention is not to, to nail existing driveways. It's, it's really about new ones moving forward.
See, that's the way the Ohio law reads it. Existing driveway, you can keep it forever as long as you don't abandon it. That's, that's, that's our non-conforming ordinance reads the same way. Eleven seventy-three.
Well, so what, what do we think? Maybe see if these, you know, the road to the main home is what we're talking about. We're not talking about backyard, you know, or maybe we are. But that's, that's, that's probably a point of discussion. Um, does not apply to existing structures intended for new. You know, maybe there's something in there about maintaining the width of the existing one to keep it from, from being triggered. Um, I mean, we, those ideas plus anything else that we think that we need to mention, let's bullet list those, then send it back.
I think it's a good idea. There are some ordinances where if you do abandon your driveway and, and I showed you, I think North Olmstead or something like that. If you abandon that, I think it's a good thing to have this in there. If they, if they abandon it, uh, then, then the, the non-conforming use thing applies. And so I, I don't think it's a bad, I, I wouldn't take the whole thing out. I, I just leave it the way, kind of the other way the code reads. But if you abandon something like that, then, uh, then you're stuck with the new rules and it's got to be a concrete driveway. And, uh, that, that, that's the way I think most cities would do it. And I, I, and so I think we ought to maybe all, each of us send a little memo in and then we mull it over. We'll send a memo.
To you? Well, I, I think you probably, probably need to physically bring it instead of, instead of, instead of sending something so we're not.
All right, yeah.
And let's, let's put it all together next time. And if we can come to some kind of conclusion on here's the four or five rules that we think need to be integrated. We'll give that to the city, ask them to have the law director.
Take as much as we can of, of what they try, they're trying to do. And I, I sort of see what they're trying to do and it's not a bad idea. A lot of cities do that. In fact, we had a copy of their, their ordinances, uh, maybe, but, uh, uh, that, that, that's, you're right. We'll bring it in with us a little.
Yeah, and, and we'll see if, yeah. And so maybe, you know, if we could pass off to him, instead of us trying to reword his stuff, let's just tell him what our intentions.
Yeah, you're right.
Tell him what our intentions are and let him do the word magic, uh, with it. And see, you know, maybe he can turn around for January or February meeting if we give it to him in December. And if we're good with that, we'll send it back to.
They wanted to get this done, so we, we probably ought to move on.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, just to answer your question, uh, all the cities that I've been involved with and the cities surrounding Mayfield Heights, Lenhurst, uh, Highland Heights, uh, it's out Euclid, uh, Pepper Park. None of them really allowed any gravel driveway. It was all, it's all hard surface. I'm, I'm sure that there's some communities that, you know, you just mentioned, you know, here that would allow, but.
No, new driveways, you're right. I think that's probably true. I'm talking about old driveways. Been there, some farmer twenty years ago.
Strictly new, yes, yeah.
I think it's, we have bigger lots here. We have far more larger lots here than South Google.
Some, some areas, yeah. But not, you know, a lot of streets here that are similar to Mayfield Heights.
That's one of my concerns is that I, I see someone owns this house, they have a gravel driveway, they're two hundred feet off the road, they sell it. That's not disclosed or whatever, but the new buyer then finds out, oh crap, I gotta go draw, drop fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand on a two hundred foot driveway, I didn't know about that. Or, or the homeowner says, you've made my property, you know, undesirable because nobody wants to buy it because they don't have this driveway and all that stuff. So it does, is, could that lead to legal action against the city and push on and stuff?
Well, uh, first of all, point of sale inspection had been challenged. And there were two communities, Walton Hills and Vertroitis, they got sued. And they had to pay a boatload of money because my point has always been, you have the same builder who built the same houses on, on the same street. Not just because I'm selling my house, I have to do twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars of upgrade while my neighbor was not selling his house, you know, he's, he's permitted to keep it the way it is. And what we're saying, well, you know, you have violations, you, you know, you, you have hazards in your house. Well, that house got the same hazards, so how do you justify that? So, and besides, I don't believe that anybody should be allowed to come into my house to do an inspection just because I'm selling the house, the property. So I, I, I've been, wherever I've been, I always said, instead of doing point of sale inspection, let's just do a systematic, uh, exterior inspection. You know, let's just do it from the street. Let's see what we can see. Is the house painted? Is the roof okay? Is the driveway okay? Is the grass, you know, you have junk in there. So that, because even if you aren't in the house before somebody sells it and you tell them to do thirty thousand dollars worth of, you know, upgrades and stuff. You know, the new tenant that comes in, the new owner that comes in there, after three, four months, their house could be worse than it was before. Some of the people live in there, they're orders or whatever. So, you, you know, you really have no control who goes on inside somebody's house. So, and besides, we're in there, if, if you change your furnace, we should be in there to do inspection. You do a hot water heater, we should be there. I mean, you, you remodel your kitchen. So that, we have different ways to come in there. So I, I personally do not think that point of sale inspection should be done at all. I mean, they should, we should do away with it. But it's just my opinion. What, you're saying we do that? We do it, well, we're doing it from, from the outside, yes. We don't go inside a house. Yes. We're still doing it.
And then we just make our points and bring them next meeting and they can take them back.
No, that they're kind of shorthanded. I'd hate to have them do a bunch of research.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you, you guys need to do something, let, let us know. Yeah, we, we've been kind of, uh, uh, there's been a lot going on, but you need anything, just let me know, please. I mean, not, you know, I, I got help now, so we, we, we could do whatever you guys want.
Is our attorney hourly or salary? Is our attorney hourly or salary?
Most likely salary.
Well, let's just go with this for now.
We'll go with that.
Bring our ideas the next one.
Oh, right.
Do you actually need to take action? You need to continue this?
I think you should just continue.
Just continue.
Yeah, I, yeah, I still have a mystery in my mind how it's here.
Yeah, all right. I'll make a motion to, uh, to continue the discussion on ordinance fifty-five, twenty, twenty-five uh, to the next meeting to allow us to, um, finalize our thoughts on the language. Just a second. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else you guys need? All right. Jason motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.